Multi-function Debbie.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on.
Okay, we're gonna call me to orders this Thursday, October 24th, 2024, please stand. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we will forego all our normal things. And go to, well, we're gonna, before our presentation from staff, we have David Bott from Medmo RPC who would like to make a presentation to our public works engineer, Matt Kringer. So if you would.
Matthew.
And there's also one for Eric Landwear.
There is one for Eric. Eric's at a conference this week. So we, we had our annual dinner, Regional Planning Commission, we had our annual dinner and awards ceremony last night, and we would give out a few awards and like to give at least one kind of based on transportation, it's a big part of what we do. And this year, we had two guys from Cole County, we wanted to make sure we recognized Matt Kringer and Eric Landwear, just great guys to work with, we've been working with them on multiple projects, they were big parts of the cart project, Capitol area rail terminal project, parts of that team, we've been working with them on a CBG grant for Stormwater Project in western part of the county. Matt served as a public works chair for our stock committee. Eric's the chairman of our transportation advisory committee, so just a whole lot of work we've been doing with them, great work on the committees, multiple projects, just a pretty, I think I called you guys, it was not the dynamic duo, you guys are really, really lucky to have you in our region, working hard for Cole County, so just wanted to give you a little certificate of recognition.
So Matt, which one of you is Batman, which one is Robin? I mean, since Eric's not here, I guess you get to vote, you know. Congratulations, Matt.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations. Yep, and I'll hang on to, hang on to Eric's, give it to him in our transportation meeting.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Did you get a picture, Debbie?
Congratulations.
Okay. Then we will move to our presentation from staff, consultants, and invited guests, and Randy, you are our invited guest, you and Joe are.
Thank you.
So, presentation by Randy Lucanotti and Joe Scottgrass of the Wall Street Group regarding Cole County's health central vision and life insurance for the county year 2025.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity this morning to meet with the commission, and these years just clicked by, it seemed like we just did this, but as we work through the annual renewal, which is January 1 coming up, 25, I appreciate Debbie, the additional team here with HR payroll, so forth, taking time just to work back through all the information we go through every year regarding the renewal, and I'll jump into the folder at hand here, which gets into the reinsurance renewal, but wanted to see if Debbie had anything, any comments or anything you all discussed prior to me kind of jumping into the numbers, so.
No, not really.
Okay, so as a reminder, always, you all have a lot that you do to run the county, but as a quick reminder, when we touch base on this every year, we are what we call partial self-funded, and years ago, a little quick history again, we were fully insured, in the fully insured market, you kind of go through the same process, the carrier, the underwriters, look at your, look at the covered members, what's going on with claims that they are familiar with, you know, diagnosis, prognosis, or where they see claims coming in, and they come up with a renewal. That renewal is a set amount, you pay for the next 12 months, and we go through a renewal process again. Most larger employers, I would say most employers over 100 lives, certainly the size of the county, being well over 200, for the past several years, have looked at different ways to finance their plan, and we did that several years ago, we moved away from being fully insured, the time with United Healthcare, to being partial self-funded with United Healthcare, so still working with them as the administrator, we still have access to their providers, as far as their network of physicians and clinics, hospitals, and so forth, which is very extensive. In the, in the world of, of health insurance anymore, it's gotten very commoditized, really across the country, there's really four primary carriers that are in the marketplace, we refer to it as BUKA, Blue Cross, United, who are with, Cigna and Aetna. So it's pretty commoditized, we're with one of the leading companies out there for administration, for network discounts, we do a lot of that review with Debbie, Harry's looked at some of that too, really from a financial background, it's helpful with his background, so we certainly feel we're with a good provider with United, and I'm gonna go through the first sheet of their administrative fees, and then we'll get into the reinsurance, if you will, so we'll also talk about your ancillary, non-medical, as we wrap up, but any questions from the commissioners before we jump in, okay? So on the right-hand side of your folder, the first page, it says renewal services, and all this lovely fine print here, on the top, I won't go through this line by line, but you'll see what the medical claims administration fee is, it's currently $43.46, going to $43.96, so a 50 cent increase, if you will. That fee is all-inclusive, there's a couple things noted down here that'll highlight some additional fees with UMR, United Healthcare, but that's inclusive of all the administration that they do, including their network access to providers, so it's all a bundled fee, if you will, so a slight increase there, 50 cents. Your broker administration fee, we, we charge a very, a flat $5.95 per employee per month, and I should have mentioned all of these, up on the top where it says all fees shown, kind of the second line there, all fees shown as a per employee per month, so P E P M, you take these numbers times your monthly census, which gets you to the monthly amount, of course, times 12 is your annual amount, and so our fee is not changing, we're not proposing a change, we've kept that, at that number for a long time, and do, and do feel it's very reasonable, most employers your size would be paying quite a bit higher broker fee, but we've been very appreciative to have worked with the county for a long, long time. The other things you'll see listed there, there's one other increase, which is on the pharmacy benefit manager interface, this is for UMR to be interfacing with our PBM, Smith RX, who's done a very good job of helping on pharmacy claims, as, as again, we've worked with Debbie reviewing that information, they're raising that $3 per employee per month, and I don't like to see an increase either, but you're seeing more and more administration between the pharmacy and the medical, as more and more claims continue to rise on the pharmacy side with advances in healthcare. The medical and pharmacy integration, the dollar 08's the same, and telemedicine is the same, the other, the other CRS benchmark, this is where if someone goes outside of the United Healthcare's network, if they're traveling, and we have to get into any, any type of fee negotiation, maybe someone's, has a child in college in a different state, and they see someone who's not a United Healthcare provider, or maybe someone's on vacation, has an accident or an illness, and they're seeing the first available emergency room, this is set up to help take care of it, getting a discount on those claims when it happens, and the fee's not really changing, they've moved it to a, they've lowered it to a 20% cap, you'll notice it's a little bit lower, so it's, they charge a percentage of the claim for the services they provide, up to a 50,000 cap per claim, but it's going from 22 to 20%, if you will, we don't see many of those claims, but it's kind of backup defense, if you will, if we would have a claim outside the normal network. So all, all in all, the current admin fee for the administration from UMR, including pharmacy, medical, and your broker advisor fee, which again, is not changing, but it's 54.74 going to 58.24. Let me stop with that, see if there's any questions on that. Okay. That is an important part, it's a relatively small part of your total spend, your other two major parts of your spend are on the next page, which obviously is a lot more numbers here, and this, this has a lot of information, a lot of detail, we go over this every year, I'm gonna go down the left-hand side, somewhat high level, but there's some key things I want, want to talk about here, I mentioned the word partial self-funding in the opening statements, because you, you, we are not large enough at the county level to just be self-funded, and I'll use whatever car manufacturer you might like, whether it's a Ford or Chevy or whatever, you know, Ford Motor Company is an example, you know, if you've got 70, 70,000 employees, you're, you're still gonna be self-funded, working with an administration company, but you might not even have reinsurance over a certain claim, you're large enough to simply write those checks, obviously with a provider discount to get the claims down, and you're not buying reinsurance. Most employers buy reinsurance at two levels, first is the specific, for every specific belly button, and I use the word belly button because it's not just employees, it's all the covered dependents, so if Randy has got three children under the plan, my spouse is covered elsewhere, it's four belly buttons for the Lucanotti family, if you will, so it's important to know that what is the risk that the county wants to pay on any individual claim during that claim year for any individual member. So that's what we'll talk about first on the specific reinsurance, excuse me, and then we'll talk about the global coverage, which is kind of your ceiling coverage, if you will. So the first, uh, uh, top up here, what we're talking about is your specific reinsurance coverage, and again, these are all kind of stop-loss terms, so on the left-hand side is all the terminology, the first set of numbers is the current reinsurance contract with Sun Life, we've marketed, marketed this out to several carriers, we're showing you a couple options on option one and two with Tokyo Marine, and then we're coming back to the Sun Life, our current carrier, renewal option, and then one more option with them if we want to raise the specific deductible. At the end of the day, it's gonna be our recommendation to stay with Sun Life, either at the 85,000, which I'll get to in a moment, or maybe raise that, we wanted to show you that we've looked at some different options in the market. The page right behind that, if you don't mind going to it real quick, because it'll make sense to talk about it here, this page is just an email, back and forth with Joe, which I appreciate all Joe's help, working through the renewal again, and obviously the day-to-day service with the employees, and working with the HR team, but this, the bottom, where the highlighted, bolded numbers are there, the carriers, these are additional carriers that we went to, Sun Life, of course, is the current carrier, and they've given a firm offer, Swiss Re is a very large reinsurance carrier, they declined to provide a proposal, they just could not be competitive, looking at the ongoing claims and overall demographics, Tokyo Marine did provide a proposal, which is on the first page that we'll talk about, and UHC has their own stop-loss, United Healthcare, and they declined to be competitive at this point either. So certainly covered the marketplace, which brings us back to the first page here. Yep.
Did Sun Life and UHC give us an offer in here?
Yep, yep, so.
We're low down at two, right?
Yeah, and there, there's, there's a few more that we even went to that didn't respond, so I mean, the, the reinsurance market is still pretty robust, but when you take, when you send out everything to the reinsurance market, you're sending all of your current benefits, your plan, the past two years of claims, you're also sending a listing of high claimants, anyone who's at 50% of your specifics, so anyone who's reached 50% of the 85,000, call it 45,000, so rightfully so, those underwriters have all of that information, you know, what's the diagnosis, the prognosis, what's going on within the group, so it's their time to dig into it and sharpen their pencil if they want to be competitive or not, but to your point, Harry, you know, right, right now, we're down to really two carriers on this renewal, that'll change year to year, Sun Life is one of, if not the largest, stop-loss carrier in the market, so we're with a very, very good company. So as we go down to the left, the, the intermediary talks, we don't utilize that, but it's going through a third party, we don't have to do that, it just creates costs, so we go directly to the carriers and work with UMR, it then tells you who, who the carrier is, again, we've talked kind of through those names, high level, the network, you'll notice, is choice plus, because that's United Healthcare's network, no matter who we would be re-insured with, and it's a good point here, that the reinsurance is behind the scenes, so certainly an important decision for the, the commission to make, but if I'm an employee of the county, I've got my card, it says, you know, United Healthcare and so forth, I don't necessarily know who the reinsurance carrier is, so it's not employee-facing, but the network is united, the deductible currently is 85,000, and we're gonna show a couple options at 85, and a couple options at raising that to 100, if you want to take on more risk, I'll come back to that in just a second. The maximum coverage limited is unlimited, I've talked about this before, but again, taking a little bit of time here, because you all, we hit it once a year or so with the commission, in 2014, when healthcare reform was passed, ACA, a lot of good things came out of that, but a couple things that have increased the risk to employers or insurance carriers is these benefits are unlimited now, years ago, a self-funded employer could have like a million-dollar lifetime benefit, once a member hit that, they had no more coverage, they might go to some other government form of care, but those, those limits are gone, so which means every covered member under the benefit plan, whether they have 10,000 in charges, a million in charges, 5 million in charges, this reinsurance is gonna pay that coverage, over your 85,000, so that obviously is a lot of risk that the market takes on. Also, pre-existing conditions were eliminated when ACA was passed, so way back when, if Randy was a new employee coming to work for the county, if I had previous coverage, I was, you know, moving from another employer where I had coverage, there was no pre-existing limits, but if I didn't have prior coverage, I didn't have coverage for generally a year, so, you know, I couldn't just come to work for the county, so to speak, and have my surgery and, you know, kind of use that to get coverage, that's all changed, which is a good thing for the consumer, because you don't have to worry about pre-existing anymore, but that does mean the minute someone comes on the county's plan, employee or dependent, and they go through their 30-day waiting period, so they're covered, so if they have that surgery on the 31st day or whenever, they are covered, obviously the county's paying their portion, but so is the reinsurance carrier. The contract's a 1215, so it covers claims that are incurred during the 12 months, we happen to be calendar year, so during the 12 months of 2014, anything incurred during that time period, reported and paid during the 12 months or the three months after, is covered under this contract, and that allows for someone to have a, you know, if they have an MRI on December 18th, it's not paid till February, it's still covered under this contract. The terminal liability doesn't come into play here, no new lasers is important, so these contracts have a no-new laser feature, the current contract with Sun Life, and if we went to Tokyo Marine, it has a no-new laser, but Tokyo Marine is imposing two lasers on this proposal, and when you first go to a new carrier, they have the opportunity to do that, and that's why we will end up recommending to renew with Sun Life, either at the 85 or the 100, is because Tokyo looks good on premiums here, but they're lasering individuals. Lasering, in general, I'm not gonna get into a lot of specifics in, in the public meeting, but it's where, instead of some, instead of everyone having an $85,000 specific deductible, they laser out someone who is, has an ongoing high claim currently, and that person could be lasered at a very, a higher amount, so we have those details, we can share if needed, but when you factor in those additional two lasers at a much higher amount than 85,000, it adds all that risk back to the county, because if someone's lasered at a half a million, it means you are gonna pay the first 500, not 85,000. Question, Eric?
There are two belly buttons that are covered, or not covered.
Would be lasered with Tokyo Marine, where Sun Life is giving a renewal, yes, it's a little bit higher in premium, but because we're under a no-laser contract, they can't laser those individuals, okay? Any other questions on that, I know it's confusing.
No, I'm glad you explained that, I cheated and asked that question earlier beforehand, because I, the heck is a laser?
Yeah, I think in, in general.
I think it's Austin Powers when I think about laser being.
Uh, in, in general, lasering has become more predominant in the reinsurance world, I mean, 10 years ago, not so much, but because of ongoing high claimants, whether it's pharmacy, medical, all the advances in healthcare, which are wonderful for all of us, if it's our loved one, but these carriers have all information, and, you know, they're looking at, what are they gonna charge you in premium to insure everyone over 85,000, they're either gonna charge you a premium equivalent for that, or they're starting to laser people off, yeah, the premium's less, but they're putting risk back on the employer, so, you know, that's, we're just seeing a lot more of that in the, in the market, and that's why we have you all with a no-new laser contract with Sun Life currently, because it avoids that opportunity for them to do that.
May I ask a question, Randy? I'm sorry, if someone is lasered on a renewal, or on, if we elected that Tokyo coverage, and we've got two that are lasered, is that in place forever then, or would that ever be redeemed where it's?
Great, great question, they would, would reserve the right to continue those lasers at renewal, if that condition warranted that.
Okay.
If the member was no longer employed or whatever, you know, they would, of course, go away, or if that condition improved, where there was no higher risk concern, each year at renewal, we would, we would see where they were at on that.
Okay, so there is an opportunity to, to rectify that, but it's probably unlikely.
Unlikely and out of your all's total control, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, great, great question. So again, throwing a lot at you there, when you look at the renewal rate cap, this is important, and currently with Sun Life, we have a 50% renewal rate cap, and when you first think about that, who, who thinks that a 50% increase is, is realistic? No one, but keep in mind, we're talking a, a small part of your total spend, it's, it's your biggest fixed cost, we just went over what the TPA administration costs are, your reinsurance is certainly your biggest piece of fixed cost, you know, we're gonna pay this premium, whether we have any claims or not, just like if you purchase car insurance or homeowner's insurance, knock on wood, you don't have a claim, you've paid that premium to have that covered. So it is important, but having a rate cap means they can't just raise this thing 300% because they would have the option to do that versus lasering, but here we have a no-new laser with Sun Life, plus they can't raise it over 50%. Now you'll notice Tokyo Marine goes to 45, so they're a little bit less, 50 down to 45 on their renewal rate cap, but of course, we're looking at imposed lasers to start with, so again, lots of detail here, but any questions on that? Okay. So then we get into the other reinsurance, we just talked about specific, which is the specific reinsurance for every specific person, every specific belly button, currently, the county pays the first 85,000, then we get into aggregate, which will be the lower part of these numbers, your aggregate is a policy that you purchase, it's, it's very, the, the chances of the county having an aggregate claim is very minimal, but the, the claims that go towards this limit, it's a ceiling, because if we don't have aggregate, realistic, realistically, the claim, uh, risk to the county is 85,000 for every colored, every covered person, well, if you take that times all your covered belly buttons, 85,000, that's a lot, so typically, by aggregate, to have a ceiling, you know, what's the worst-case scenario, if we had just a lot of people that had claims under 85,000, and we're work, what, what this is allowing is all the claims under 85, because anything over 85 is covered by your specific reinsurance, so to give you an example, if we had a million, $85,000 claim, easy math for Randy, yeah, it's a large claim, but you're only gonna pay the first 85, the million's gonna be paid currently by Sun Life, now we'll probably see that at renewal time, but the, the, the reality is, what if we had dozens and dozens of people that had claims under 85,000, well, that's all gonna be accumulating with no reinsurance because you haven't hit 85 yet, so that's why we buy this ceiling reinsurance, if you will, and the ceiling reinsurance, the numbers are at the bottom, I'll get into, what you're purchasing is a million-dollar insurance policy, if we hit this ceiling, that we'll talk about in the lower numbers here, you would have a million-dollar policy that would step in, it's the same coverages, it's a 1215, both of these cover medical and pharmacy, so just, it's replicating the specific, but on the umbrella for the whole group, if you will. So that is an overview of what you're purchasing, or asking the carriers to provide you with coverage, next, we're gonna get into the premiums, let me stop first and see if there's any questions on that, okay? So the premiums, these are hard dollars, and you're gonna notice, the first thing listed there on the specific, right in the middle of the page, is your census, so currently we have 195 employees, that of course changes a little bit month to month, but it's a static number for calculations, 195 employee onlys, 10 employee spouse, 75 employee children, that's one child or more, and then 18 employees that have a spouse and one or more children. The rates next to that are the premiums that Sun Life is currently charging to cover claims over 85,000, then you look at the two options from Tokyo Marine, I'm just gonna look at the, the employee amount as a point of reference, you know, it's at 220 at the 85,000 level, 177 at the 100,000 level, so you would expect to have a lower premium if you raise your deductible, so just like in my example on your car, if you go from a $500 deductible, $500 deductible on your car to 1,000 for collision, you're gonna save premium, of course, you're gonna pay 1,000 instead of 500 if you have a accident, so when you go to the fourth one over, this is the renewal from Sun Life of 85,000 with no lasers, so it's going to 230, so 155 to 230, a, a big jump, and then if we go to the last one, option, it is Sun Life's option at $100,000 specific deductible, so that's raising your specific deductible from 85,000 to 100. When you look at the annualized premium, at the, at the total there, you'll see we're at 825,000 of premium today, so this is a hard dollar we're paying, if we had zero claims, we're still paying that premium going out, that 825 is getting a large increase because everyone is hitting with, hitting us with a pretty big increase here due to ongoing high-costing claimants, Tokyo Marine is a little bit less, but again, you've got two lasers, they're at the, you know, million 60,000, which is 20, almost 9% increase, their $100,000 option is close to where we are today, about a 5% increase, the Sun Life, second one from the right, the renewal, is the 1, 1.2 million round numbers, a 48% increase, so just below the 50, not belittling that increase at all, and then if we raise to the $100,000 specific, it's a 36% increase. The reason we would recommend staying with Sun Life is we would not have any lasers imposed, we're paying a little bit higher premium here, but you're not lasering out the, the two individuals, it really would come down to whether the county wants to stay at the 85,000, or look at the 100,000, and doing the rough math, which Harry's probably already figured out, is you take the, you take the premium of 1,265,000, if you're following me here, without this premium, the renewal premium, if you subtract the $100,000 premium, that is 103,000 of savings, I did the math myself, well, you're saving 103,000 in premium, but what's your risk, you're taking on 15,000 more in risk per claim, so if you divide the 103 by 15,000, it's 6.9 is the delta, so with that in mind, again, throwing a lot of numbers at you here, we can stay at the 85,000, we can, obviously with an increase, no lasers, still have the renewal rate cap built in with Sun Life, we could go to 100,000, you're gonna save 103,000 in premium, your risk is an additional 15,000 per high-costing claimant, so you divide that 103 by the 15, you would have to have, call it six people to break even, if you had less than six, probably money ahead to take the 100,000, because you're gonna save some premium, if we had seven, or eight, or 10, been better off to stay at the 85, we're gonna pay for it a little bit at renewal next year, if you will, so I, we do like to see it around that six times mark, because it was only, if it was only like three times a delta, it's not worth it, but it's not right or wrong, it probably comes down to, is it more important to have a little bit of cash flow, savings and premium, that 103,000, which is divided over 12 months, you know, that's, that's hard money you're saving, but you're risking another 15,000 per claimant, so does that make, I know that's a lot, so.
Looking at it from 50,000, there's 400 belly buttons out there.
Well, technically on our insurance, there's only about 300.
The 298 number?
Employees, employees within their dependent, plus dependent.
Is this 298 under?
Yeah.
Uh, that's just your employee count.
That's the employee, I'm sorry.
So two, no, I'm sorry, so two.
Well, it's your employees plus.
But that, but you would take the 298, the number's higher than 298, because you have to add spouses, and actually, you've got, you've got, you've got 10 spouses, so we know that's one person, you have on the children, there's 75 people that have children, we don't know if that's one, or two, or three, we do, we'd have to go back, you're probably easily, you're probably another 150, at least another 150 belly button.
So you're right.
Probably 450.
Six out of, out of the universe that we have.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I probably already made up my mind on this, but let's run back a year, a year ago, we went from 75 to 85, right? And six was the, the anticipated number of folks that would drop in the. And six was the anticipated number of folks that would drop in the.
Yeah.
Between 75 and when we met with you a month ago, I think it was only 53.
Yep.
So are we going to hit the six?
We have four that are over. Actually, we have three that are over and one is right at it, and two more that are below that. But there's six total that are at 50% or more of the current specific. So we're going to be right.
So it's kind of like what we expected.
We're going to be right around that number. You're kind of trading, you're kind of trading dollars.
We almost traded dollars.
Right. With that said though, over time, the carriers, I'm talking in general here, but over time, the carriers, I've mentioned this before, are going to continue to try to make it attractive for you to take a little more risk. Because if you think about it, I'm just talking in general, not specific to Cole County, the cost of medical and pharmacy care for this population, or any population, two years from now, four years from now, is probably going to be higher with inflationary cost of medical treatment, pharmacy treatment. So if a employer stays at the same deductible for five, or six, or seven, or 10 years, you're taking less risk on your population's claim. So over time, the carriers are almost going to pull, pull you along by enticing you to do that. So it's not right or wrong. If we don't do this this year, we certainly can look at it in the future. And next year, it might be eight times that delta or whatever. So, but does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So I know that's, I know I'm throwing a lot at you all. You touch this once, once a year, like I said. But the good news is, there's no good news in having an increase, so I'm not belittling that. But the good news is, we have a contract with Sun Life that we're recommending renewing on that has a no new laser feature, so they can't laser someone out. And there's a rate cap of 50%, which is a lot of increase, but we certainly have an increased cap versus no cap. So we're in a good spot, we're with a good carrier. We've been with them quite a while. You know, there's some benefit to staying with them for some longevity as well. So our recommendation would be to stay with Sun Life and simply ask the commission, you know, to take consideration of whether to stay at the 85 or move to 100. And then I can finish up going over the bottom numbers too, but any other thoughts on the specific premiums? Okay. So the next part, again, a little more throwing numbers at you here. What we just went over are hard dollars. That money again is going to be spent whether we stay at the 85 or the 100. We're going to spend that money to have protection of the reinsurance protection for each specific person. The lower part of this, the left-hand side, it says aggregate claim liability. So these are all your claims for the plan under the, currently the $85,000. Because, you know, anything over 85 goes to the specific. So you're seeing that our current attachment factors, if you look at where it says $615.87 under the current one, that's a factor. And these are underwriting factors. And just to go up above that, if you will, on the, on the aggregate premium, so above where it says $853,000, you'll see where it says $28,321 on the current column, kind of in the middle of the page. That is what they're charging for this aggregate premium. So $28,000, call it $30,000. That's to buy this million dollar policy. They don't charge a lot of premium because they're actuarially setting you at a point they don't expect you to hit. And you're going to see that they're raising these attachment factors because they're always going to kind of keep that, that level between where they expect you to have claims and what they're actually going to have, pay out, if you will. So the maximum claim liability today, if you add those four numbers, the 615 times your 195, the other numbers right below there, times your census, this claims liability today is $3,006,000. That plus your fixed cost, which is your premiums and everything, currently your expected planned cost is the, excuse me, go all the way down, bottom says maximum planned cost. That's adding up your maximum liability plus your fixed cost gets you to the $3,860,000. Keep in mind that $3 million is, those aren't hard dollars. That's just the ceiling that you would have to get to before this million dollar policy would come in. So if we only have 2.7 million in claims, that's what we had in claims. We didn't pay out the $3 million, or the fixed cost, of course, we know we're going to pay that out. You are seeing an increase in your aggregate factors. The good news is, Sun Life is a lot less than what Tokyo Marine was offering. And this is another reason we don't feel they're competitive. They were more competitive on the premium side, but they had two lasers involved. Here, they're raising your attachment factors up almost 50% for both of these options. When you look at the fourth option over, which is the renewal of Sun Life at the $85,000, they're raising your specific factors 11.53%. So still an increase, but certainly much more in line with what we see with medical inflation in the marketplace, that, you know, 10 to 14%. So that 11.53 plus your fixed cost gets you down to your bottom line number of $4,618,000. But keep in mind, 3.4 of that is the soft dollars, if you will. So at the end of the day, again, a lot of numbers here, your percentage of change on the fourth option over, or the second one from the right, the renewal of the $85,000 is a 19.63% increase. $400,000 of that is fixed premium that we know we're going from the 850,000 to the $1,265. So $400,000 of additional premium we know is going to be paid. The rest of it is soft dollars, if you will, but important to have the ceiling. So total exposure increase of 19%, 19.63%. If we go to the $100,000, you'll save a little bit in premium, but your exposure goes up a little bit because it seems counterintuitive that your aggregate factors would raise. So you'll notice if you go back up to the aggregate claim liability, where it lists now $686 right here. And if you go to the 100, it's 714. You know, why would this go up if you're raising your specific from 85 to 100? The reason is because you're asking this carrier to allow another $15,000 per claim to go towards that ceiling. So you're asking them to allow more claims to go towards the ceiling, they're going to raise the ceiling. That's kind of confusing. But at the end of the day, our recommendation really would probably be to stay at the $85,000 and renew with Sun Life on the no new laser contract going forward. The county has been very blessed and very blessed of the employees to continue to pay the bulk of all the premium, you know, for the employees. It would just be a matter of, you know, going into next year, if you all want to do anything else from a budget standpoint, to set other monies aside for your plan, or if those are in your general assets, obviously accounting for that. So let me stop talking for a minute. Debbie, anything else you would add?
No, other than to look at that renewal at that 85, I want them to understand, like even the individual, you would add that $230.13 to the $686.89 is the recommended premium for that, for that option, right?
Yep.
And just so you guys know, when we started this back in 2015, we probably, we were self-insured. We had a dollar amount that we were paying for our employees. We took the, we took the recommendations, right? But we set our own premiums, what we were going to charge. Last year was the first time we went up in six years on what we were charging our employees, charging our funds for this insurance. So as you can see, this is way higher than what we're currently charging. Not only this 11, 11%, 11.53% increase, we are still taking on more risks because we're only charging our employees $654 right now for the monthly employee only cost. So I just want you to be aware of that. We've never really, this is again, right? This medical is suggested amount that we should be paying based on medical expenses, based on drug costs. It keeps going up because they know it's going to keep going up.
What did you say we're charging each employee for premium?
Well, we're not charging, but we're charging like each fund. So we're only charging them 327.
Oh, you said 654 or something.
That's total for the month for that person.
Yeah. Just for an individual, $654.72 for an employee only, right?
But the employee pays?
Yes.
Okay.
The county's paying.
That's where you can use them.
Yeah, sorry. But we've taken on that extra risk.
Did we raise the cost to employee for coverage of family last year?
Yes, 5.6%. And again, that was the first time we had done it in like six years, so.
But we have eaten into our, our, that's not a good term, the savings that we recognized by going to the stop loss and so forth. We had over $3 million there.
Yes. At the end of '22, or yes, we had about $3,200,000. The end of '23, we have about, we had about $2,700,000, and now we're at about $2,300,000.
So just, just one thought with that, and that's kind of where I was going to, is again, wonderful that the employees aren't paying anything for employee only coverage. And obviously, you divide that up between the departments and so forth behind the scenes. The question is, are you getting to a point where you need to raise that number?
What is our goal then for the fund balance?
Well, we have reserve goals. You know, there's different ideas about what you should keep. Obviously, we have a three-month rollover, right? From the end of the year to the next year, we're still paying bills. And then what I took it as a whole month, a whole year's worth of reserves. I can show you what the reserve goals are out there, but you know.
Okay, so do you have a number? So you said we're at 2.3 at the end of the current year.
No, that's just cash balance right now.
Okay, so 2023, we'll use that number. We were at 2.7?
Yes.
In there?
And.
And so what do we want that number to be?
And I'll say, because we're at 2.7, that's why we went up 5.6% in the premium.
So we want to keep it around 2.7, or?
I'd say if, I mean, I don't know, what's your, 2.5?
Or is that, I mean, is that an us decision here?
That's your all's.
Okay, so then I guess I'm looking for a recommendation for that. If we're, if we want to keep it at 2.7 or 2.5, we're going to have to change the premium at some point. And do we want to do it little by little? Or do you want to say, well, in two years, we got to make up some funding and all of a sudden, we stick it to them? And I mean, if we need to do it now, we need to do it now.
And that 5.6 was definitely not sticking to them compared to, to what other industries have.
No, but I mean, trying to make up for all in three years instead of saying, guys, we're just going to, like eating an elephant, we're talking about something else.
Sure, I would hope we could go there more than year by year. I would hope we could keep it the same for, ease them in, maybe every other year. Don't wait six years.
Well, I, I'm a head of school, and a wise partner once told me that the goal is to get the most feathers out of the goose with at least the amount of gessing. So if I can, by the time, there's not a lot of gessing when you get to that, where you're putting off, and then you grab a bunch of feathers one year, because a lot of.
But I think that was what Debbie was saying, to do it little by little, right? Or were you saying do it all in?
You ride a coaster a year.
Yeah, at least two years to keep it the same. But that's up to you guys, right? So.
If we were living at a 2% inflation rate.
Right.
But we're still over 3, and the last four years, it's been good money.
Yeah.
The Wall Street Journal's had all kinds of articles on, on the cost to employers and the cost to the families of what health insurance is. And it's really, this is not as bad as some that I, that they have.
I'll refer to Mark with the budget. I know probably what Mark has in there now for the budget is for all that to remain the same.
Okay, so that's a question too for the budget then. Do we budget the maximum planned cost?
We budget.
Or should we do the hard numbers and just have the rest of it sitting there? If it happens, it happens. I mean, is it?
We budget what we say that we want to charge our people for.
Well, but he's talking on the expense side.
Yeah.
Oh, in this account?
When we look at the premium here, it's some kind of hard dollars and not so hard dollars. What does Mark put in the budget?
And the health.
Is what we expect.
Right, in the health insurance fund, he puts it all in there for expense, not with saving some of that reserve in a contingency, right? In the health insurance fund. We're going to pay that hard cost and we're going to pay those medical bills, right? We're going to get money back on stop loss if somebody goes to that point. So, but what we budget and each department's budget for what the county's paying for, for each employee, is based on the scale of that $654 for each employee per month. So. So Mark.
I don't know, I might be getting too far down in the weeds on that, but.
My budget's all prepared based on no increase.
There you go.
I mean, no increase to the departments or the employees.
Employee, yeah.
So 2024, the budget was 3.86 million.
And when I give you that.
It was this maximum plan cost. So that, we budget that. It doesn't mean we're going to use it all if we don't have that many claims. It's just, that's what we say, hey, that's prepared for the worst. And then if we have something left over, we can carry over or put into the fund balance.
Before you, you said X, I, I, in my own, my choice, I think is what I put inside the brackets. So you enforced my choice, which is the not option for renewal with 85.
Yeah.
That's where I'm going. And then we've got a separate discussion on what did we do? Did we ask the employee who has covered children's spouse, we asked them for more?
Right. And what we charge for the employee for each fund, yes.
I'm along the same lines. I mean, I'm good with the recommendation.
This is mine.
So.
Recommendation for the option.
85,000.
85,000.
Okay.
And so.
Then on the, what we're talking earlier, Sun Life does not, and has not done any lasering. And someday, they could, but they're, historically, they have not.
Under your contract, they can't because we have a no new laser built into the contract.
As long as we stay insured with them and renew and renew and renew, it's.
Well, they could come back, Gary, they could come back a year from now, we could go to the future. There might be a day when they, they say, if you laser, we'll do it cheaper.
Yeah, we could, we could go to them.
Okay, they can make it an option.
Yeah.
Got you.
You could always go to them and say, okay, instead of it going up 48%, can we do a laser and so forth? But right now, having the no new laser, and the key is the 50% rate cap. Again, not, not saying 50% is good, but if you didn't have a rate cap, it'd be like, hey, we're not going to laser anybody, we're going to raise your rate 400%. Well, same difference. So having a no new laser and a maximum increase, and 50% is pretty standard in the market. You see Tokyo Marine's at 45. So those are good protections. And year to year, you know, it's just, it's based on high claimants and what's going on. And the good thing is, the reinsurance market is still robust, even though we didn't have a lot of lookers this year. I think it's telling you that Sun Life's, the market's almost telling you, we can't, we can't beat what you're doing. But year to year, if we have a year where we really look good in the market, we're going to get more and more aggressive quotes out there. Now, some of them may not, that may or may not have lasers and so forth, which this year, we, you know, have to take that consideration. But that's our job every year to go out and research all that. And again, it's behind the scenes, you know, your employees don't see all this, but.
Have you, have, when you said they would hear you every year, is this the first time that you brought a laser proposal?
We've had, we've had other years where they, carriers can laser, yeah. And, and good, good question, Harry, but we're, I mean, right now, where the market is, unless anything changes, we're seeing this more and more and more right now. These carriers are very good at, they're very good at underwriting risk because they get the case management notes on these high claimants. They know exactly what's going on with the diagnosis, the prognosis, understandably because they're underwriting the risk. So, and we're just seeing more high claims in general, not just the county, but you know, it's, it's the advances in the, again, the medical and pharmacy treatments are wonderful. Again, if it's our love and one, and we need that, it's just, they're expensive.
Then I would ask you guys to renew with UMR for the administration and network, and then renew with Sun Life for the stop loss, if you guys could make that vote. Then I would ask you guys to renew with UMR for the administration and network, and then renew with Sun Life for the stop loss, if you guys could make that vote. Then we can move on to the other stuff.
So on the pharmaceuticals, when you go in there, if you gotta pay it, and I'm just gonna use myself for example, when I went in, and they didn't have, like, current insurance because I hadn't gotten anything in a while, so, and so it was gonna be two hundred and twenty dollars. Well, then you get them the insurance card, and it was eight dollars. Are we paying the two hundred and twelve dollar difference?
You're only, you all, because we're with SmithRx, and we've got a contract in place, an actual physical contract that says what's being paid for generics, brands, and so forth. It's following.
So we may be paying fifty-two dollars, and the employee pays eight dollars.
Yeah.
But SmithRx is, is much, much.
They've done a really good job of helping manage risk, you know, there's, and, and they're helping employees find ways for, you know, different ways to lower their costs and so forth too, you know, which is individual conversation with those employees, but they've been a good partner so far, so.
I mean, it was less than I expected, I actually had to pay, but then.
Yeah.
The initial, initial.
Yes, I was like, two dollars.
I picked up two prescriptions one time, and had the credit card ready to insert, and she said thirteen cents.
Yeah.
It's very, it's very, yeah.
Well, I, I'll let you all make a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt a renewal with Sun Life. And with the eighty-five thousand for stop loss, and the renewal service at NPA. As presented.
Okay. Good.
Got you. Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Aye. You gotta keep Joe, too.
Yes, yeah, Joe, you can't retire.
Joe's my boss.
Can we have a separate motion?
He actually came down the hall today and said, yes, boss.
With Sun Life, because it's with a different company.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Separate motion with them for the, the stop.
Motion to stay with Sun Life for the, and the same stop loss of eighty-five thousand.
Yep.
Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
And so we'll, we'll talk about premiums yet after.
Yep.
Okay. And then I'll let.
Yeah, on the, on the non-medical, what we call ancillary life, dental vision, so forth, that is with Sun Life, maybe you all talked about those, Debbie, and already.
I have not talked to them about, but there is no rate increase that Randy and them negotiated with Sun Life for all of those. So I'm recommending you renew with them for the year two thousand twenty-five. And again, that's dental, the county is paid for by the county for the employee. They can buy up to their dependents, and vision is paid for all by the employee. The county does supply a fifteen thousand dollar life insurance through this same company, Sun Life, that is free to the employee. They have an option for optional term life that they can buy into if they'd like, so I'm just recommending we renew with no cost increase.
And then the short-term disability, you want to talk about that now too, or is that a separate?
Um, let's do that separately.
Okay, okay.
So you would like a motion to make this, to stay with Sun Life for dental.
Group life.
Basic life and voluntary life.
Yeah, both, yeah.
Second.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I'm gonna let you explain. We had talked earlier with changing to, there came an issue with maternity leave, so we checked into short-term and long-term disability and see if that will maybe solve our problem, as far as not having maybe maternity leave, but offering this as a solution for some of our employees. Not only does it cover that, but it covers other stuff. So we wanted to get the most for our money for the type of maybe problems employees have. When they first get here, it's hard for them to build up enough sick time to, to accommodate some problems they may encounter. Not only pregnancy, but getting hurt outside of work, you know, they have an accident at home, and they can't be here for three weeks. And now they have no time, right, because they have only been here a few months. So I'm gonna let.
Sure.
Randy explain the difference between the short-term and long-term to you.
You bet, thank you, Debbie. On the left-hand side, there's two staple copies. The first one's short-term disability, and it's just that. On the left-hand side, it kind of runs through certain components. I won't hit all of those, but important for the commission to understand what you're looking at here. So what we're proposing is that this would be an employer-paid benefit. And when you, on the left-hand side, as you go down, the description would be all eligible employees. So everyone who's a benefit-eligible employee would be eligible for this, just like they are the basic life insurance. The waiting period is thirty days of employment, which matches your current, Debbie. So, you know, someone has to be employed here for thirty days before they're eligible for benefits, so this follows that normal process. The benefit amount, when you purchase disability insurance, there's no carrier, understandably, that's going to pay someone one hundred percent of their pay for the reality of, well, if they can make as much staying home, what's the incentive to come back to work? I'm just talking in general here. So usually, you see that a sixty percent benefit. So if someone would go out on short-term disability, have an eligible claim, they would be able to receive sixty percent of their weekly earnings up to a maximum listed right below that of fifteen hundred. So the maximum that would be payable is fifteen hundred a week. And to put that in context, if you take that times fifty-two, that's seventy-eight thousand dollars. And to back into seventy-eight thousand, you would have to have a salary of a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and thirty, sixty percent of a hundred and thirty thousand backs into these numbers, which means anyone under a hundred and thirty is totally covered up to the sixty percent. If someone's making a hundred and fifty thousand, you know, they're not gonna be quite replacing sixty percent of their weekly income. But just, when you, when you think about math, but a fifteen hundred dollar a week benefit is a very nice benefit. You could back that down to a smaller amount, and the premium would be a little bit less, but this gives you an idea that you're covering anyone from whatever amount all the way up to a hundred and thirty thousand salary at a full sixty percent of their weekly pay. So whether I make forty thousand or eighty, you know, I'm covered all the way up to a hundred and thirty, if you will. So that is the benefit that they would receive. The maximum weekly benefit, or, excuse me, the minimum's only thirty-five, kind of a mute point, but when you get into the injury start date and sickness start date, it's okay, how do you qualify? So short-term disability covers both injury and sickness, and this will start paying on the eighth day. So they have to go seven days, so I'm gonna use a, let's say I, you know, break my ankle, it's an injury. I go in, have whatever service is done, and that date of injury was, you know, the first of the month, for easy example. I'm off work for, you know, four weeks or whatever, you know, I can't work, you know, if I'm road and bridge or whatever it might be, I mean, if I can't get out of work, I'm on a disability. The first seven days, I'm not gonna get coverage off of this. I might have sick pay, sick time I might use or whatever, but I'm not gonna have coverage here, because you don't want to give day one coverage and send people for, you know, obviously, going in. But after that seventh day, and again, I would file a claim, it would go through the normal processes, I would start getting sixty percent of my weekly pay for as long as I have a continual disability, and I would get that for illness or accident. And this does cover maternity, maternity classifies under, under sickness, but maternity, which is the number-one used benefit for short-term disability. Or if I would have a surgery, or whatever it would be, that I'm off work, this would step in. The maximum benefit period is twelve weeks, so basically, three months. So this benefit would start covering after the seventh day, and it would pay a total of twelve weeks. Now, if I only needed to be off six weeks, and that's all that my, I had, you know, if I only have a doctor's, you know, authorization that, you know, I'm only off for six weeks, I'm eligible, go back to work, I can't just stay home and keep getting paid. I'm gonna not, not be getting paid after six weeks from this carrier, so ideally, I'm coming back to work. So it does cover for nine, for ninety days. After the ninetieth day, there would be no, no additional disability coverage unless that employee purchases voluntary long-term, which I'll talk about next. So what we're talking about here is employer-paid short-term disability, which you've never had before, and it is a very, very nice benefit. It, again, gives the employee that coverage for sickness or accident, employer-paid after seven days up to a total of twelve weeks to really protect their paycheck. That's pretty high level, but anything you would add, Debbie?
The only thing, it's not to let the employee stack this. If the employee's already being paid by us via sick or via, they wouldn't be able to collect on this one.
It's on offset.
This is just an offset.
If they take sick leave, it's an offset of the money.
So if they have, the first seven days, they would use?
Sick leave, right.
But then after that, they'd be able to use short-term, or if they have sick leave, they would have to use it first?
The short-term, it, it is, I talked with Sun Life this morning, just to verify that, there is no direct offset. The employer can make it an offset, but the first seven days, there's no coverage, so if they didn't have any sick leave, they wouldn't have anything, or if you all didn't provide anything else, they just wouldn't have anything. If they had sick leave, probably would turn that in and use it. After this, after the claim goes forward, if the county wants to have the employee use, you know, any built-up time, you can make that a requirement, but Sun Life gives you that option, it's not mandated in this contract.
Our, our decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in some, to that point, you know, some employers are trying to get certain banks down and so forth, so you can do that if you want.
And, and this is non-occupational, so if they have a valid work comp claim that is compensable, that they're being paid lost time for, this will not stack on top of it.
Correct, yeah, yeah. This is only for not, this, this would not cover workman's compensation.
Okay, thank you.
Very, very good point, yeah. And there is no pre-existing, thank you, Joe, there's no pre-existing addition with this coverage. So if this start, this would start one, one of twenty-five, if the commission decides to implement this. If someone had a child on January second, they're covered for disability. I mean, they're gonna go seven days, and then this would kick in. So knee surgery, whatever it would be, but there, there is no pre-existing addition that someone's not covered. A lot of times, that comes into play on maternity, that, well, if you're already pregnant, you're not gonna have this coverage. If you implement this, whatever, whenever you implement it, everyone's covered that day with no pre-existing condition.
As long as they're already benefit-eligible.
As long, yeah.
So they would have had to have been hired prior to twelve one.
Uh, I mean, if you hired them one one, if you hired them twelve one, and they're on one one, correct? If you hire them one one, they'll be eligible two one, again, with no pre-X, so. So the pre-X is nice, there used to be pre-existing, but industry's kind of gotten away from that. There is on the long-term disability, not the short-term.
So if, if someone has enough sick time to cover it, and it's off time, are they still eligible to turn in a claim or not?
They are, under this policy, unless you all want to change the parameters of it.
So they, they can use this instead of their sick time?
Yeah, we, currently, we force them, under FMLA eligibility, we force them to burn sick pay to get those banks reduced, because it's a liability for us. So under FMLA, they, they do have to use those benefits. If they're gonna be FMLA eligible, they still have that option of collecting on sicker vacation to get that done. But we have a provision in our current policy that they can't double-dip, they can't stack coverages. So if, in that case, under this, unless I'm wrong, they would either elect sick pay, vacation pay at a hundred percent of their salary, as long as they have accrued time, or the short-term disability at sixty percent of the salary, not a hundred and sixty percent.
So our policy would preclude that, so that, that is.
And that is our existing policy that's been in place a long time.
Because our goal here was those people that ran out of time, didn't have enough time, you know, it wasn't to stack it and give them more because, again, we want to get our liability down, but we also want to be helping employees that don't quite have any coverage, so to say, with sick time.
But it would be up to us to say, if you have leave, you have to use it. Is that just sick leave, or is that sick and annual?
Vacation and comp, so any, any accrued balance that, that we would have a financial liability for, current policy says they would use it.
Okay, so we can, option A, say, after seven days, we'll take care of it, or option B would say, till you use your accrued leave? Or would there be an option C that says, we'll do it for sure seven days, or after seven days, after that, leave it up to the employee? If the employee only has five days of vacation, and they got vacation coming up, plan one, say, in, you know, six months.
Sure.
Then they could choose, or?
Well, you have a thirty-day grace now, so with the employee, with the department head coming in here, I don't suggest we pay for the first seven days. I suggest it's under that thirty-day umbrella of time, and then, then they would start getting paid by this company, not, not us filling that gap for them.
Yeah, what, okay, what was the thirty-day thing?
Unprotected leave right now.
Yes.
So even if they ran out of their time, and they weren't FMLA eligible, right now, we have an opportunity to issue, at your all's approval, the department head can request a thirty-day unprotected leave window. So they're not gonna be shoved out the door either way, whether they.
Right.
Do or don't have time.
And one thing I would suggest is, one, is this something the commission wants to do, whether you want to vote on it today or not? The specifics about, you know, you all making it mandatory to use the sick pay or not, that's normally a conversation we want to have with the underwriter at Sun Life after this, because they want to set up their claims system the way you all want it set up, and they give you that option to set that up that way. So that way, when the claim comes in, they know whether it's mandated that someone has to use that, or obviously, they're gonna use it for the first seven days, because they're not even involved. After seven days, that claim comes in, they're gonna look at their system, and what you all want regarding your own policies, how do you want that to dovetail, if you will?
And then one question, if I may, this is a short-term policy, valid up to twelve weeks of, of coverage. Say that, that I fall and break my leg, and I have to be off twelve weeks, and I have enough accrued time to do that twelve weeks. Can I defer filing the short-term claim after I've burned all my accrued time? Or is it twelve weeks from date of event or lost time? That this is the window of opportunity?
Yeah, you, you gotta use it within that window of your.
Okay, like we did the parental leave provision, that was within first six weeks of birth, so this would be an immediate deal.
So you have, you'd say you have a month's sick time and vacation. So af- after a month, and this is, this is twelve weeks, are they able to, to use this then for the next?
Only the remaining, remainder of the twelve, right?
Not, not for twelve, they can use.
So they wanted to be off the whole three months, and they had a month's worth of it.
So the other two months?
Yeah, we'll, we'll double-check that, it's gonna tie, it's gonna tie into the data.
Data loss, or data first, data downed.
Double-check that, yeah.
Are you gonna go through the long-term disability too then, and then tell us the price on it, or did you have?
Yeah, so if you all talked about that already, the, the, the total, and the total annual premium for the short-term disability employer-paid, based on the census that we worked off of the time and salaries and so forth, was seventy-seven thousand annual premium. If the employer paid for the premium, it would be a seventy-seven thousand dollar budgetable premium based on current census, current salaries, and so forth.
And I'll add one more thing, this company then would make those decisions whether that employee qualified or didn't qualify, not the county doing that.
Right.
So. Yeah.
Yeah, it takes away the discretionary complaint.
Yeah, which is a good thing.
The only other thing you're looking at is some, if somebody has mounted up a large amount of leave, because that person's been a come-to-work person all the time, if you decide they have to leave, use that leave first, sometimes you get disgruntled people that way, because other people have used their leave and been off and things. So you need to just think about them when you're paying it all out.
That's why, so, that's why Sun Life gives, Sun Life gives you all some discretion there, I mean, they want to.
That's why I was asking, if we give them the option, if they want to use it, you know, if they've been banking it just for that reason, you know, in case something ever happened.
But they have to realize they're getting a hundred percent if they lose.
Where this is sixteen percent, so.
So, yeah.
Depends on how they can budget their money.
Sure.
Or if you can offset the forty with the difference, you know.
Yeah.
So that, that is the short-term disability proposed to be employer-paid, again, seventy-seven thousand premium. And just to shift to the one behind it, this would be a suggestion to offer this as a voluntary option. You do not currently offer voluntary long-term disability. So again, the short-term, if you approve that employer-paid, Randy's an employee, I've got that, just like I've got my life insurance and dental and medical. It's employer-paid, it's a great, great benefit. The long-term would dovetail, if you will, the short-term, meaning if you look at the provisions, again, thirty days of employment to be eligible, and cover sixty percent of their monthly earnings, not weekly, because this is a bigger picture. Maximum monthly benefit is seven thousand a month, the elimination period is ninety days. Well, the reason it's ninety days is because we have ninety days of short-term disability coverage. So when this is ending, if the person still had an ongoing claim, and they had purchased long-term disability, because they would pay for this themselves.
Employee.
Employee pays. Employee pays for it. And then, then that person, you know, if they're off for six months due to illness, injury, whatever, accident, you know, they could, they would obviously use their short-term disability, some sick leave and so forth, but they, they'd have some immediate coverage. But after ninety days, this goes away. If they had purchased this, they could continue to receive benefits with their long-term disability. If they don't have this coverage, and of course, it'd be a personal choice, then they're just back to their wherewithal to, you know, cover their livelihood without any income coming in. So, you know, disability certainly is protecting the paycheck, if you will, just like we buy insurance for a home or auto, or whatever example you wanna use. So, this goes into a rate table. We would customize this for all the employees. It'd be based on their age. You can see that obviously, younger employees are a, a lower risk. So the rate is a, it's a monthly rate of thirteen, you know, the first one listed, they're underage twenty-five, is thirteen cents, almost fourteen cents. You can see it goes up to over a dollar X as you, as you age. You simply take that number, times their covered payroll, and that's how you come up with the calculation. So, we didn't lay all that out as an example, but for Randy, the employee, if I'm, if I'm looking at this, which we would have all this organized, it's gonna go ahead and calculate my age, my salary, and it's gonna tell me, if I wanna purchase this, it's gonna be thirty-two dollars a, a month or whatever, so, our paycheck, whatever. So, it would all be laid out for them, and then they would make a decision, do they purchase this or not. The only thing I would mention on pre-existing, you'll notice, this, uh, let's see it here. Oh, down on the very bottom of the bullet points, the fourth bullet point down, a three-twelve pre-X. So, this does have a pre-existing, understandably, because it's voluntary. So, if I choose this, anything that I've been treated for, so if I chose this one, one of twenty-five, if I had been treated for anything three months prior, October, November, and December, it won't be covered for the first twelve months. But if I had knee surgery six months ago, so it was longer than three months, and I had to go back in in January and have knee surgery, this would be covered again. So, if I don't take this this year at open enrollment, it'll be offered next year. I could take it then, but I'd still have a three-twelve pre-existing. And for all your new hires, it'd be offered just like everything else. So strictly voluntary, no cost to the county, certainly not a bad option to give employees the potential. It's very expensive for them to try to buy long-term disability on their own. So getting it through a group product is a lot less expensive, and obviously payroll deduction is convenient, so...
And I would say, currently, we have Aflac come in, and they do sell their short-term and long-term disability at the employee's cost, right? But because of the last year and all the maternity leave issues, that's why we're bringing short-term to you guys for an employee-paid benefit, employee, or paid benefit, sorry.
Okay. So, are we done talking about all the benefits and...
Yeah. Yeah, and this, this is also, this is also with Sun...
Well, I didn't wanna interrupt in the middle of it.
No, no, no. No, it's also with Sun Life, so it's in carriers. And for the people who are, good point, Debbie, if I'm taking Aflac short-term disability today, I'm paying for that, and this is implemented, we certainly will want to make sure they understand they do not need to keep their Aflac short-term disability. It's gonna be an increase in their paycheck, because now it's covered by the county, people. Sorry, Joe.
Nope. That's, I was gonna make sure you were done with that part of it. That's a voluntary one, so that, I don't, I think that's a no-brainer, that we can go an option out there. We can talk more about this today, or at budget time. But the short-term, seventy-seven thousand annually.
Yes.
How many eligible employees do you think we have? We just use a round number and say two-hundred, one-hundred and ninety-eight is what you had on it?
Three, four at least.
It's all employees except for elected officials, and, uh, part two, who did we say?
Part-time.
Is two-hundred a round, round number enough to go with?
Get closer to three, probably.
Okay, well, I was using two-hundred and, that's three-hundred and eighty-five dollars per employee, per year. So, it would be equivalent to eighteen and a half cents per hour. And so I was thinking during budget time, if we're talking about this, how is this gonna affect? We're taken away from what we possibly would be giving raises with, I think. But, when you first started talking about this, I, I was shaking my head. I know you saw me, and I was like, God. I didn't think this was gonna be that reasonable. I, I really think this is a reasonable price for it, and it may be the answer to the maternity leave issue.
Because every employee would be eligible for this situation, as opposed to the minimal group that were not FMLA eligible before. It was a smaller ratio group, under our stopgap measure.
I, I'm pleasantly surprised, is what I'm saying. I just, I did not figure this to be that price.
If you would approve, if that's what you wanna do, the, the short-term itself, and then me, Sheila, and Joe will work out the details of how, how that will look, as far as our manual, and make sure we have it covered, sick time, vacation time, all of that. And then we work it with the carrier, if that's possible for you guys to...
You have an addendum to the policy here?
Well, we will.
Yes, which policy revision's already in the works right now, anyway?
I said my two cents, I didn't know where you all ran it, so...
I, I've always been a little sensitive on disability policy, because disability is the one you can't, you can't fit the line.
It's true.
I'm gonna leave that alone.
And since the, the most, the highest probability of somebody thinking it's probably like the fishing.
They had on the radio, they were starting to harvest body parts from somebody who was dead, and he came to...
Oh. Well, and this...
I've heard that on the radio.
And this...
You heard it on the radio, it's gotta be true.
And this company gets to make those decisions, it's out of our hands.
Yeah, that's, that's the beauty of it.
It's non-discretionary, yes, yes.
If somebody, if an employee can't come to the commission, or this, is a...
There's a doctor report in the claim file, you know, the claim form that they have to do and everything.
Yeah.
But I, I think that's a reasonable price, and we can figure out how to, if you just apply the tourbillon, or if you tweak the COLO from three-point zero to a two-point now, and you can make it whatever.
We were just trying to, what we did this year was...
Yeah.
Maybe you want it, go by it.
It was a stopgap this year, we were just trying to, it didn't work very well.
What if they utilize the benefit, right, Joe? Short-term, if they utilize the short-term benefit, then it would hit the W two as a paid benefit.
They'll, they'll help with the tax program and all that.
They do it all, they don't, it's Sun Life.
Right.
They send out their own. Yes, they send out their own.
The ten ninety-nine dollars.
I believe that's what it said, yeah. I'll get you the details.
So I'd ask you if you want to approve the short-term disability for the year two thousand twenty-five with Sun Life, financial.
I didn't think I was gonna be ready to vote on it today, but I, I don't know with the information we've got, unless something else comes up. I kinda think it's a no-brainer. I think it's gonna be a very nice benefit. It's gonna get us out of the maternity leave discussion and benefit them expected mothers, so...
Is this falling out of the deer stand, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, only, after, after January one.
I won't get pushed, it, it might be pushed.
You're an elected official?
Next year, next, you have to wait till next year.
Elected official.
All right, so the wife still can't push me out of the deer stand, so... So I keep telling her, I'm worth more alive right now.
I'll let you make the motion.
So, I will, how do you want this, we're just to go ahead and pursue the short-term disability for two thousand twenty-five, with Sun Life at the total annual premium of seventy-seven thousand dollars?
That'll work.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. On behalf of all of our staff.
Well, thank y'all for bringing this up, and trying to find a solution to it. I mean, we were, we were looking for something, and some way to work with the...
It's a, it's a nice, it's a very nice...
It is, thank you.
And the long-term, and, you know, it just enhances your benefit portfolio?
It does.
So do we need to have a motion to include the long-term as well?
As an option?
Because I said short-term, so...
To make it available through Sun Life also.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to say, okay, I'll make a second motion, that we do the long-term disability as a voluntary benefit for two thousand twenty-five.
With Sun Life.
With Sun Life, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
She's gonna, she's gonna say, you gotta say Sun Life, so...
Again, this has surprisingly been the most enjoyable health insurance discussion we've had. And it, I think it's the longest one.
It is the longest.
See, of course, our clerk keeps sticking his nose in here, because he wants...
But I'm, I'm gonna circle back, I'm not, you're not done yet, sorry.
Yeah, we still got some homework to do.
They can, I hope they stay, but now, to, to the premium. To the premiums we're going to pay, we're going to charge, not only the employee for dependents, but for the other funds associated with each one of their employee. Because we renewed, and we know there is an increase, do you want to change the rates for the year two thousand twenty-five, or do you wanna keep them the same, and go back and review our, our carry forward, our, our reserve in our health insurance?
When do we have to decide that?
Debbie, can you pull up the budget, or just, or just pull up the USNA and see where we're at?
As far as money-wise?
Yeah.
Versus the potential three-eight?
What's that?
Versus the potential three-point-eight million premium that we had the potential to pay, yeah.
So...
I'd just kinda like to see where that's at, where it's gone, and I'm, I'm with Harry on this. I'm gonna pluck a couple feathers at a time, instead of grabbing a whole handful, and...
Well, and of course, everybody's gonna swap, but still, we are very generous in our benefits in that we're paying any dependent coverage.
But we have to do this to be able to keep a forty to do this. So if we don't, at least plan for it, if we're gonna, like I say, we'll pull, pull one strand of hair out at a time, or...
Right.
Yank ya, so...
So from what I'm understanding, yes, we adopted this plan, so our annual expected total cost by adopting this plan is three, almost four million, right?
Potentially, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's not, because that's, that's on number claims and everything. But yeah, that's, that's your best...
The fixed cost is definitely gonna go out.
No, that's current, right?
Well...
New would be four-point-six?
Uh, your expected is the three million nine forty-seven, the maximum is the four million six. So what they, what they do is tell you the max, this maximum represents your ceiling, but they back off of that, because they don't expect you to hit the ceiling, and they tell you what they expect you to have, which is a three-point-nine, call it four million. So we're at, we're at three-point-four million today, three million three hundred fifty-nine thousand, going to three million nine forty-seven, so call it a six-hundred thousand dollar expected increase. So then, yeah, back to the internal discussion of, do you add more funding, you know, or not? And, yeah, you, you all, I would compliment, I mean, you, you all still funding all the employee premium? And you all know that, you hear, the HR payroll team hears it. Yes, there's other employers that do that, but it's getting harder, it's harder to do it. So it's great for attraction retention to pay all the employee premium. And if they leave, obviously, they can take Cobra, and then they're paying all the premium, they realize how much it is. And you all are paying part of the family, which is wonderful, because there's a lot of businesses that don't. But your competition, specifically, you know, state, city, whatever, they pay for a lot of, you know, they pay for some of that too. So, you know, some of your privately-held companies don't do that, but, so it's wonderful you all are doing that, but...
Kind of talking to some of our other counties, you know, what their employees pay, they're actually, yeah, we're...
A lot of them are not paying all the, a lot of them, the employees have to pay something to be covered, for themselves, not to mention family.
We're, we're kinda unique.
Yeah.
Generous, which you probably shouldn't, very generous, because it's... So what Mark was looking at too, was in the, you know, how much are we putting into this health insurance fund yearly from the payroll as we are now, and what we're charging? And it's about two-point-nine million. So, in theory, if we were to charge what they're saying, you know, we'd be down another million. But I don't think that would happen, you know, but I can't tell you for sure.
As of today, we have two-point-seven million dollars in cash in our health insurance fund, as of today.
And we started the year with...
Two-point-seven.
Two-point-seven, so we're currently at the same point we were to start the year.
But the prior two years, we had dropped by three, four hundred thousand years. So...
And what I was giving you before was the carry forward every year, you know, you know, yeah. We had, we were all the way up to about three-point-four, and now we're, you know, we're two-point-seven. But that was back in, before we had a lot of stop, you know, multiple stop laws.
Are people really using it a lot more at the end of the year to...
Yes.
I think our balance can take...
Another year?
I'm on the other, so I don't have to...
Based on what I'm seeing right now, so. That could be for further budget discussion, and budget as well, so. I don't know that we need to make a final decision on that, but I know Debbie brought it up.
It would help.
It would help, or otherwise, Tuesday for sure, because I gotta open enrollment.
Oh, that's right, you got it, that's right. Let's, let's, let's put it on Tuesday.
Define what is the, the cost?
Premium cost to employees?
Yes.
Yes.
Not only what we're charging each department for each employee, but what we charge our dependents. If you see any need to change that, I would kinda keep that...
Let's leave that one to the side, we're gonna charge the employee, and then you do that. Why wouldn't we always, quote, hit the department with the costs, and why would you not do that?
Why would we not? Some funds are balanced and tight now, so I don't know what else to say about that.
Let's become, let's just say hypothetically, we've got one department that's now way, very efficient, and it, it can't absorb it. Because it can't absorb it, we make a rule that nobody absorbs it?
No, what I'm, why I'm saying, we, because our health insurance fund is sustainable, it is healthy, yes, eventually, you're going to, if this goes down, you're gonna have to hit our departments harder. You're gonna have to hit each fund harder. It is what it is. So if we can't sustain it in that health insurance fund, we're going after everybody, every department, every fund, to spread that cost out. But I'm just saying, when you look at what they're suggesting we pick, charge, it's way higher than what we're actually charging, and it always has been. So, okay, I'll put it on the agenda for, to decide on the pricing on Tuesday, so then the next week, we can have open enrollment.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Oh, and I think you had one other thing on the agenda.
So, maybe can you find out what's, kinda where our numbers were in twenty-two, twenty-three? Maybe at the end of the year, to see how much it did change, if there was a substantial change in it? I mean, right now, seems like we've, like Carrie said, holding steady.
Here's it since fifteen, and this is the end of the year cash balance in that health insurance fund.
But I'm just talking about further, like the last couple months of the year, was there any big changes to...
Oh, the difference, like, okay, I can look at that.
I don't know if that's the same as other people do with budgets sometime. They have the money, they wanna spend it now, so that we don't take it away from them next year, but, and we do watch that.
Yeah, I can look at the October, November, December from this year compared to last year, compared to year...
I mean, just see if you notice anything, and there any trends that we can take into consideration. I mean, I think if it's holding steady, then I'm probably gonna be fine with leaving it where it's at, but, I mean, we gotta watch it close, because it can...
Yeah, unfortunately, in the cash balance, they don't usually hit till January, February, March, you know, so it's kinda hard to get a true look at, just looking at the bank account. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
When the income's constant, the claims, obviously, fluctuate.
Well, and to that point, that, that's why the reinsurance is so important. Again, if you were a hundred thousand employees, the claims come in, they come in, and so forth. But at three hundred employees, we, you have to have numbers to set a budget. Otherwise, otherwise, we could have claims all over the place. So we know that our fixed cost is X, our maximum claims, expected claims are X, so we have ceilings. And we have a tough year, they're gonna raise the ceilings the next year, but, so, but I think y'all are wise to look at it. Those are decisions you all have to make, you kinda know where you're at. I mean, you know, it's not, again, great that you're not charging it to the employee. It sounds like even if you raise the budget, the budget amount by departments at some point in the future, it may not go to the employee, which is commendable, because a lot of employers have had to go down that path.
So something we could look at, for sure, this is our fix, this is our stop law, this is a fixed cost. So we're, for this year, we're looking at eight-hundred... So we're, for this year, we're looking at eight hundred and twenty five thousand. Next year, we're looking at one point two million, so our costs, our fixed costs will definitely go up.
About four hundred grand.
Well, our expected plan cost is six hundred thousand dollars more for next year.
Yeah, four and four hundred, that is.
Four hundred, that is fixed, yes.
Do we need to meet that head on this year, so that we, or do we have enough in there that we can address it next year? How far are we gonna kick the can down the road?
To you, I think there's enough in there for now, to go another year, but that's.
Okay, so Tuesday we'll.
Tuesday we'll just sign.
So Joe and I are gonna put a goose in here before you all start the meeting, and we're gonna leave.
I know where you can get some of those.
I still like it when I, when I call Wall Street, this, when I dial this now to speak to Joe, and I get, and I'm like, who did I get?
Yeah, Accrashire, Wall Street, so we, I think we've shared that before, our, we're, we are an Accrashire partner, our building actually has Wall Street Group and Accrashire on it, very proud of Wall Street Group, obviously, for thirty plus years, and that's not changing, but we're part of Accrashire, which is a national, international company. I mean, there are twenty two countries, we have, we're Accrashire employees, because we're part of Accrashire, we're seventeen thousand employees. So you're certainly with a large national and international firm, but obviously, we're proud to be here and local and so forth. But it does give us more resources, some of the H R legal compliance tools that we have, you know, we would have a hard time doing that on our own, but we have those available through Accrashire, so.
Seventeen thousand, are you self insured?
Yeah, self insured, self insured, but we do, with that, I do want to, we have worked with the county for over thirty years, which is remarkable to, in today's world, to work with a client that long, which obviously, we're here to serve you all, and we certainly appreciate the relationship of all the years, and probably if we go back thirty years ago, the employee premium was probably a hundred bucks, so, you know, times change, but.
Nineteen cents.
Yeah, yeah, but we do appreciate the relationship, working with the county, and obviously, all the leadership that we've had the pleasure to work with through the years, so thank you all.
And they've been, a guy sent to us, and with employees, calling about questions and, and everything else, and they bring in a stack of E O Bs, and I say, um, Joe would be happy to help.
I just heard a joke too, yeah. Why did that cause a joke?
Well, the N S A pulled up, U P S pulled up right next to him, like, where are all these boxes? Joe goes, that's Sam's E O Bs.
And so I do want to commend that their commission has not changed, probably, probably since we started with self insurance, so that is highly different, and before, everybody was on a percent basis, so this has really helped us, and helped us have a good relationship with our agents, so it's really good.
Yes.
Well, thank you all. Your people are always very kind.
Great to work with.
Appreciate the help when they get it and everything, which is more than I can say for some.
Well, we, we definitely appreciate it.
Whether we like the answer or not, be nice.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you, let's do the surplus titles, and then give the clerk our flavors, or he keeps sticking his nose around the corner. Oh, my God.
That's the renewal? Yeah, Debbie, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much, have a great week.
Thank you very much.
Use it, use a deer stand harness. Tie it around your wife's neck.
I'm on my back deck right now, hunting, so.
Thank you all.
Wait, let the deer come to me.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Signing the surplus titles.
So make a motion to sign the surplus titles for twenty thirteen Chevy fifteen hundred, two thousand six Ford F five fifty, nineteen ninety. National one hundred, two thousand six Ford F five fifty, two thousand six International seventy six hundred, two thousand eight International seventy six hundred, Hilltop Freddler, two thousand six Ford F two fifty, and the two thousand seven International four hundred forty, bucket in front.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that was, that was all of them, they're cleaning house, I think, so. And I will put that back on the agenda for next week.
Second.
Gentlemen, thank you.
All in favor? I mean, I'll take these in my office and sign these, and then give them to.